You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 26th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access support county dot org.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Michigan City Commission for Women's our monthly meeting. Today I did send out everyone the agenda. So, about today, beginning the agenda is a call to order. So I will call names and if you could just say President or present. So Angela Carter.
Present.
Linda Conley, present. Keisha Ward, present. Jacqueline Jones is present. Kiana Edwards, here. Nyla Williams. Charlene Livesay. And Sarah Jones stated that she would be absent today. Excuse me. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a guest speaker here. And I'm going to give a brief introduction for our guest speaker. One moment. I should, I should be able to say it. But I don't want to say anything, though. All right. So the speaker this evening is an entrepreneur. That we asked her or requested her to be our speaker this evening. Based on our 2024 theme, which is empowering entrepreneurs. She is a, she, she stated she's a woman of God, business owner of Michigan City Hope Nutrition. She was, she just received the I Rise Award. She is a wellness coach. She's very knowledgeable on wellness and health amongst business. And I'm just going to introduce to some and well, present to some, introduce to others, Aubria Clifton. Welcome. You can stand or you can sit at the table. We welcome you at the table with us. And Aubria, will you just share your business? And also what inspired you to be an entrepreneur? And whatever you would like to share with us, and I'm pretty sure we'll have some questions and questions for you as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I did write up some things just so I am timely. It didn't miss anything, but thank you all for allowing me to come in and speak to you. I know some familiar faces and others I don't, so I'm glad to be able to be in a new room. So my name's Aubria Clifton, as she said. And first, the former was giving honor to God, the head of my life. In a world like today, it's hard to find your way. You know, at my big age, you know, now I'm in right now. But daily, I'm on a mission to walk in purpose so that God may get the glory out of my life. And one of the, um, one of the scriptures I live by is Psalms 119, nine and 11. I just want to start with that. How can one keep his way pure? By, by guarding it according to your word. With my whole heart, I seek you. Let me not wonder from your commandments. I have stored up your word in my heart that I might not sin against you. So every day I wake up, I seek to live out what God has for me. So how did I get here? Well, I didn't know a lot about nutrition. As we has spoke about previously, I was a basketball player in high school. I went to college and I played for one year, but I didn't know how to take care of my body. I didn't know how to treat it. As well as what, what a good relationship with food look like. Cause you know, it's very suddenly, you know, we don't see that often. So I went to college, once I stopped playing basketball, I gained, they say freshman 15, I gained the freshman 30. It wasn't even a 15. So when I came home, you know, they say get the degree, they, you know, get the career and so forth. Well, I had the degree and then what? I didn't, I was sleeping on my grandmother's couch, not knowing what I wanted to do in my life. Not feel like I had a purpose and I was overweight. So I was depressed and just going through the motions and I had to find my way. And that's when I first found God. And then once I found him and started seeking him and his word. I then found my nutrition company, which is called Herbalife. And I found my coach on Instagram. I got started and I dropped 20 plus pounds. I gained some amazing energy, but I didn't have to take naps throughout the day anymore. And I wanted to share that with my friends and family. So that's how it started. And it just to throw it out there before Christ, my character was very much flawed. I didn't have a, a purpose to be a better person or it's just like, I am how I am. You know, and I didn't, I didn't seek to be, be better. So I was lazy, you know, procrastinated. I didn't have discipline. I lacked a lot of character flaws that, character things that I seek to better every day now. So, so now Christ is the ruin. And I have a routine mentally, spiritually, emotionally and physically before I get into the world and walk in purpose. Cause we have a saying, conquer myself before I conquer the world. How can I pour from an empty cup? So now I'm partnered with this, the number one nutrition company in the world for about six years now. I was doing it online on the side of my retail jobs and things like that. And then about two years ago, I'm like, I want to do this in person. I want to bring, and a couple of reasons why, like for one, there's a lot of stores popping up, but not many that are healthy. You know, and so we have kind of lack in that area. So being backed by the number one nutrition company, I could bring quality nutrition to our city. As like I said, there aren't many alternatives. And then I wanted to educate our community, whether it's older generation or younger generation. I'm able to reach many different people on like I said, how to treat our bodies in many different ways, not just physically, not just fitness. But like I said, their relationship with food is very important and living a healthy life. So that's one of my missions as well. And then bringing a positive, fun, impactful workouts and events to our city and our community. Where I, we can control the, the energy, we can control the vibe. I didn't see many of those things, you know, they, they might promote other things I'm not into, especially going into Christ. So now it's like, what can I do that's fun and positive and empowering? And so that's what I get to create that. So and lastly, or two more. So I get to show how we can collab and not compete. I think especially, you know, in this area and the region in this state. We feel like we have to get the gatekeep, we have to keep the information to ourselves. When, especially in this business, but in anything, we don't have to keep that because what's for us is for us. So I love that I could collab with other women as well as I get to support my sisters and others. I used, I used to struggle making friends. I used to struggle speaking in public and around people and lacking confidence. So God has gave me the strength to overcome. I want to be able to empower others to do the same by using my testimony and speaking life into them, how I was spoken into. So now by incorporating God, healthy living, a morning and evening routine into my life. I have been able to complete, I have done a complete 180. So I know the next person can use these tools to do the same thing, right? So as far as the business and my, my brick and mortar MC Hope Nutrition. We have a few different events coming up. We have a bootcamp we do every Saturday morning at 8:00 AM. I do recommend getting there a little early so you can be ready, prepared. So that's every Saturday unless stated otherwise. And then we have a game night this upcoming Saturday as well in the evening at 6:30 PM. Like I said, we have the events where we're coming together, having fun, positive interactions, but we're also pointing to each other. We're also networking. We're also talking about, you know, struggles that we are enduring and how we can come together and work through it, you know? So, um, as well as next month, I do have, I do plan to do a breast cancer event. So stay tuned for that information on our business page, which is MC Hope Nutrition. As well as, like she said, I am a transformation coach. So monthly, I also do a, a virtual transformation challenge for 21 days. We're not just people that's in person in my community, but also from anywhere, we're 94 countries. So I get to help as many people that are serious about their health and just need those tools. Whether it's accountability, support, meal plans, the workouts that we know work. And you can get those results. So I have that as for access as well. Now, we spoke about entrepreneur, entrepreneurial life. And let me just say, it is not for the weak. It is not for everybody. And sometimes it's like says, at my big age, I question if it's for me or I have question. But just like life, it has, it's roller coasters, right? But I wouldn't trade this for anything. And a few reasons why I knew that this was for me was because before I had my business, I was in retail. I was a server at a country club in a few different places. And just, and I was also a preschool teacher. And as I was developing certain skills that were just coming up, like I said, I lacked those characters skills that are key in living. And once I started working these jobs, I started noticing what made my heart thrive. You know, what, what made me smile. At first I was like, I wasn't, I wasn't a people's person. But like I said, as I continue to pour into myself and develop these skills, it's like, oh, I do like talking to people. Oh, I do like, you know, having fun with people and I said pouring into them. As I always say, pouring into myself. So some things like at one job, I was, I rearranged their, their shoes from alphabetical, alphabetical order. Likes like rearranging their whole back stock. I'm only, I'm still getting paid the same $12, but I'm doing way more work. And it's like, why am I doing this? You know? So I noticed, you know, now, like now I'm in network marketing. That the work that you put in, you can get the income, the same, the same that matches that. So that's how I know. And like I said, so if I can leave with five tips as far as entrepreneurial life or skills to develop. Before and or during while you're on this journey. Our number one, discipline. I think that's what a lot of us lack and I like, I've lacked and still working on, that's my number one is discipline. Because you have to be your own boss. You have to be your own boss. Yo, you, you don't have nobody saying, we gotta work at seven o'clock. So you have to be the person that say, get up at a certain time to get to where you need to be at a certain time, right? So, and that's just in one area. So, but how you do one thing is how you doing everything. So if you wait to put gas in your car, I'm sure you waiting to do something else too, right? So, um, so discipline is every, is, is very big as well as consistent in the things you committed to. Because we are consistent in something. Whether you consistently watching your show on Netflix every night or consistently going to, you know, get some food that you like. Versus I, I need to be consistent in the gym. I need to be consistent in having a breakfast. I need to be consistent in drinking water or reading my Bible. Those are things like I said, whatever you commit to, staying with that and being consistent in that is very key. And that will help with your business because you, like I said, keep those same traits going forward and everything that you do. As well as communication, we deal with people every day. Like, and I said, as I worked on myself, I noticed that I enjoy talking to people. Even though, you know, I'm nervous, says all can be out. But like I said, as you work on it and I pray and I put my emotions, my flesh to the side and allow God to use me. Then I'm able to communicate and help the next person that I may not, may or may not know who I'm speaking to. So it's very important. And you know, we, we, I said, communication, how you express yourself, it can be taken different. You know, the wrong way that you may not have wanted to be taken. So at how you, you're learning how to express yourself and communicate with others, you will be able to impact a lot more people. Number four is resilience. Now, like I said, entrepreneurship is not for the weak. So having that resilience to keep going, having a resilience when it doesn't look like what is, what you think or thought it was going to look like. Is very key because like I said, it can be discouraging when you, when you talk to somebody and they tell you no. That can hurt your feelings, make you want to quit everything. Like I said, I've been there. So having that resilience to keep fighting, having that resilience and remembering your why, like why am I doing this? You know, that's very key. And then lastly is integrity. Doing what you say. You know, the integrity is doing what you are supposed to do, what is right, even when nobody else is looking. So if I'm doing something, I'm gonna do the right thing in front of y'all, I'm gonna do it when I'm not in front of nobody. So that's very big. And that's the same thing as far as business too. It'll take you a long way. So you never heard me say anything about finances. And that's because God will supply what you need when you're doing his work. A mentor told me your income will never exceed your level of personal development. And if it does, it won't be sustainable, it won't be for long. So if you work on your relationship with God and your character, your life will be extraordinarily blessed. Like I said, I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak to you guys and be here today to add value to the room. Thank you.
I have one question.
Okay.
I mean, it's my Bible, how you stated that, I guess, concerns with communication. And it just appears like you're a pro in how you communicate. Thank you for sharing those, what I have discipline, consistency, committed communications, resilience and integrity. And that is important. But I've had your shakes, your protein shakes, because I'm trying to shed sometimes. So, and they're delicious, ladies, the ones that I had.
Since Herbalife?
Yes.
It's at her shop. She does them too. Where's your shop?
So I make them, the address is 5180 Franklin Street.
Is, is that in a plaza?
It is in a plaza. It's between AT&T and ATI. So on that side street is right across from Chipotle.
On south.
Where Chipotle is, it's right across from Chipotle.
And can you share your hours?
Yes. Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Like I said, I wasn't a morning person. I had to work my way up to that.
You said Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday is 7:00 to 3:00. And then Saturday is 8:30 to 1:30.
8:30 to 1:30? Ladies, I want to share my favorite is the strawberry cheesecake. And then she has the, the, is it called Staylet?
The Litties.
The Litties, for the energy and whatnot. It is very good. But I'll let you share, can you share some of your other products?
Yes.
That you offer, like the aloe?
Of course, of course. Um, so like she said, in store, I make meal replacement shakes. They have 24 grams of protein, but it has more than just protein, has your minerals and vitamins. It's keeping you full. So that's why I've been having it for breakfast for six plus years. Keeping you full, but light on your toast. It was not like a heavy breakfast. We're just like, I'm tired now. So I make those. I make the energy teas that she said, sugar free. I include the aloe in there, no crash, you know, clean energy, no crash. And it's going to give you that, that mind focus and clarity right away as well as that long lasting. So you're gonna have three or four different ones throughout the day to finish your day strong. As well as I make protein coffee. So if you like coffee, I am not a coffee fan, but I love my coffee. It tastes absolutely amazing. I say, yeah, you're getting protein. So you're hitting, you're getting that caffeine kick and the protein snack. And as well as I have a different thing that you can add into your drinks at my shop. So I have like a fat reducer. It's called Prolessa. I have a probiotic. I know that's very, that's very important for our, our digestion. Like she said, the aloe helps with digestion as well. We have hydration. So kids, you know, kids can drink shakes as well, but hydration like the, it's like a healthy Gatorade. It's very good when we're exercising and doing, you know, all the things, the active things as well, like fiber. I have so many different products that can help you and aid you into a healthy diet, a healthy lifestyle. As well as, like I said, we're 94 countries. So I can ship it to your house and you can have it at home. And I have 200, over 200 products. I said, not all of them are in my store, but I'm able to provide over 200 supplements that can help you in aiding in that healthy lifestyle.
What days are your, I mean, where's your bootcamp at?
The same place.
Oh, at the shop? And it's at 8:00 AM on every Saturday?
Yes. Yep. Unless I'm not there. So next weekend I won't be there. But if you follow the page, I'll make sure I, I put stated if I'm not there.
Is there a cost for the bootcamp?
Currently it's free.
Okay.
And you get a discount on your drinks when you come to the workout.
To the bootcamp?
Yes.
Okay. That's nice.
And you're saying that you have these transfer, you're a transformation co, you know, coach also? Is that virtual or do you have to, you have that in your shop?
It can be both.
Okay. Is there a cost for that?
Yes. So like I said, 21 days. I have proven with my own testimony as well as thousands of more people that use these products. So I do recommend my products to, you know, to successfully complete the 21 day challenge. And fill in those gaps that were missing to be able to achieve the goals that you said that you want. So I do highly recommend that. If you don't necessarily want to use them at all, I probably won't be the best person for you. But I can give some tips and tools, but like I said, we have over hundreds, thousands of testimonies, the results that we know it works.
So the costs involved is through the products that you purchase?
Yes. So you will purchase your products and you have full access to my tools, my coaching and my support and accountability.
Aubria, can you share any recommendations or tips on how you can inspire or inspire? Or what would be your recommendations for a young entrepreneur or youth? You know, someone that has the desire to be a business owner.
Starting as they, as they're young or?
Yeah.
As, as a desire to?
Or, yeah.
When they're older?
That as well.
Okay. Well, for one, like I said, working on yourself, you know, those, those traits that I said about the discipline. Even like when you're at school, like not having to have your parents tell you, excuse me, tell you to get up, you know, multiple times. It's like when that alarm goes off, you're up, you're at it, you're ready to get your day started. You know, keeping your room clean. Those are traits that, you know, that you have within your capability to be independent within, you know, getting your schoolwork done on time. You know, being the best that you can at your practices, whatever sport you play. Those, like I said, those align with building your skills and your traits as a, as a person. And within that, like I said, those traits fall into and go into other categories. So whatever you're seeking to do, for one, research it, you know, see what it takes. What, what skills are needed as well as like I said, work on yourself. And then I always recommend having a mentor. Like I said, I'm at a big age right now and I need a mentor. So just like, just ironing shop and sharpening iron as well as, like I said, you navigate, navigating through life, navigating through business. It can get foggy. So having someone that you can be like, it's okay, like I've been through that. Or you're not the only one dealing with that and giving you tips and tools to implement right away, not sit in that. So work on yourself. What else I say? The, um, having a mentor and researching where you're wanting to go.
Excellent. Does anyone have any other questions for Aubria? Is your game night at the same place?
Yes.
Okay. What kind of games?
All the games.
All the games?
All the games. I love, like I, like I said, I love that I get to create this space because I'm gonna bring what I love to do. I love spades. I love dominoes, you know? Yeah, all of them. I mean, but we have like, I'm, I'm working on doing some like TikTok games. So having like a Jenga and then you pull it out and it's like, it has like a task to do on there. You know, something like that. Sounds fun. Yeah. Or Uno. I mean, like, you know, simple games, just having fun, coming together.
Nice. Is this gonna be monthly?
Every month I plan to do some type of event. It might not be the same, but depending on if they love it, we could bring it back. Like the, the spaces, it's free access for our community. It's a wellness hub. So like I said, us coming together, whether we want to do a networking event with entrepreneurs. And like I said, us coming together and talking about whatever, a brunch with ladies. Like I said, I want to do something with, for breast cancer month. Even like holidays, you know, I have one. I just, I'm just all about bringing people together on a positive note and empowering them to be their best self. So.
Excellent. So your game nights on Fridays?
It's gonna be this Saturday.
On Saturdays, nice.
So it's, I have one event once a month. And so it just depends on what it, what the, the community would like. So like I said, this month is a game night, but next month can be a movie night.
But it's always going to be on a Saturday?
It, it varies.
What time?
This Saturday is gonna be at 7:00, 6:30, 7:00. I'll be there at 6:30. So you can come on in anytime you like.
Any other questions, ladies?
I have, did you, on that entrepreneurship, did you incur a startup cost?
Did I incur a startup? Um, I did personally because the brick and mortar, because it was a turnkey. So it was already set how my business is. I just purchased it from another person that was doing it. But when it comes to this business, it's a small startup cost of like a hundred dollars. Literally, I can do this in 94 countries on my phone. And you know, I don't think we take advantage of the free marketing and assets we have on our phones as, you know, in our palms every day. So within the business itself, it's not a free, it's not a, it's not a expensive cost. But even, you know, I started off with, like I said, the hundred dollar startup cost. And then I was doing workouts at the park. I was at Pullman Field for two years doing workouts. So like I said, now I'm just using, utilizing what I have. So now I'm doing it in the parking lot, you know? But so you don't have to, you know, have much of a, you know, a budget to, you know, work with to work this business. But depending on where you wanted to go, that would be, you know, important.
I have a question.
Yes.
You make the drinks at the place you're at, right? So is there a possibility to give us like packages? Do you have something that you could distribute?
It depends on what it is. I can do the energy tea kits. I can put those in packages and distribute those. I might do those in various events I go to, or if you come into the shop, I can make one for you there and, yeah, and you can have it. As well as a lot of the products are already individualized packets that you can just purchase at my shop. The shakes, not so much, but like I said, we can, I have, we can work it out.
Now, what about the shakes? Is it milk products?
It, I make it with water and ice.
Okay. Great. Do you have business cards tonight?
Not tonight. I don't, but I will, I can make sure I write down the information for, they're getting worked on. As you, you guys don't know, I didn't say, but I'm also about to be a licensed roater. So I'm working on some new business cards and so, yeah. But I make sure I have slightly the information that you can follow the business pages.
And I, I also have, if you want to give it to me, I can make sure I email it to all of you.
Okay, please.
Any other questions?
I think it's amazing how you've used, utilized all the things that, you know, throughout your life. But also doing a second and third career is always great because you can fall back on one or the other. So that would be one of my final sayings about being an entrepreneur, but thank you so much for coming.
Of course. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
What is this big age that you keep snoring about?
Just little.
Well, as I just, I was, you know, I'm observed, very observant and, you know, just going through life, I evaluate a lot. So I just see myself, you say, when I, back in my day, you know, back, back then, I was at high school. So I'm like, I'm really, I've been at high school for over 10 years now. That's pretty big for me. But I am 30 or I'm 29, about to be 30. So that even that transition is, is a journey itself. So yes.
I'm proud of you for this period.
That's pretty big for me.
You're in those twenties, by the way.
Yes, yes.
Well, it's been great having you.
Yes, thank you. You did.
Thank you.
Of course.
Can I be in touch with you?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. So we're grateful that our guest speaker came and she was amazing. So when Aubria shares her information, contact and, and the events or whatnot, her business cards or whatnot. I can make certain that I can email all the information to you all. Next is the approval of minutes. I did send that, I emailed. I apologize that I wasn't able to have hard copies here for you all. But I don't know if you all reviewed the minutes or do I have to read them? If not, if you all don't see any corrections, can someone motion to approve the minutes?
See if there's anything.
Or you want to take a few minutes to?
A few minutes.
Go over them. And if you want to see mine?
Sure. And you can just touch the screen and make it larger.
And you can just touch the screen and make it larger. Everybody had not counted you. Any corrections that's needed?
Alright, baby.
Okay, will someone approve the minutes?
Just, my name isn't spelled correctly.
Okay, so can you give me the correction? I'm sorry, I apologize for that. Can you?
We can take the, the U, there is no U.
So it's Q?
I A N A.
Okay. I apologize for the misspelling of your name. Any other corrections? If not, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
I believe that we approve the minutes for the, um, August meeting as is the corrections again.
Can someone make a second or second the minutes being accepted?
My second minutes being accepted.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye, all opposed. Thank you. Okay, so next, um, the treasury report with Charlene is in here. Um, the last balance that we have is my moment. The current balance as of last month's, um, treasurer report is thirteen thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Um, nothing has been, no additional donations or requests or anything of that nature has been given out since the last, um, meeting. So that is the balance as of today. Though, well, as of August the fifteenth, so, um, I'm certain that Charlene, I can request if she, um, if she wants to send, um, me a current, um, as of today, she can, or she can for next month's meeting. Other than that, I can email, be certain that I email any updates to you all. Unfinished business today, um, the unfinished business is still, uh, pending. The grant writing workshop, getting closer to it though, um, have some maybe, um, that's, uh, and, um, sorry, an instructor that will, um, be able to teach the, uh, the grant writing workshop. So still waiting on that. That's pending, looking in the month of November for that. Also, um, twenty twenty-four Michigan City Commission for Women's Retreat. If you all have any, um, recommendations on a venue or a restaurant or something of that nature. I know someone made a, uh, recommendation, maybe a potluck or something like that. Um, so if you all will keep that in mind, if you have a recommendation of a date that you all would like to, we can revisit this at next month's meeting. Um, also for next year, twenty twenty-five, um, I don't know, or gala, I'm sorry, the, uh, the gala for the year of twenty twenty-five, we don't have a date yet and we don't have the month. But that is something that we will be working on or working towards. Um, again, if you all have, I'm looking at a couple of venues right now. But if you all have something in mind that you want to share, um, prior to me working with the sponsors or whatnot, uh, please share that information, um. We are gonna be developing a subcommittee for that and I think that, um, I sent, well, I included that information on the email that I sent out to you all about some of the areas such as, um, the, um, menu, if you have an interest in working in that area, the menu, developing the menu or whatnot, um, the media. Sarah has stated at the last meeting, she wasn't able to participate on a subcommittee, but, um, she will, she volunteered to work in the area for her media. You know, flyers, getting the announcements out and things of that nature, um, decorations, um, uh, don, uh, donations, um, sponsors, different things of that nature. So if you have some type of area that you think that you're a good fit in, please keep that in mind and we'll revisit that at the next, next month's meeting, okay? By then, I should have some information, more information regarding the venue, okay? And we can look at the months. For an example, if we want to give it in, um, March, if we want to have it in, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm coming down with the coat. If we want to have it in March, if we want to have it in February, April or something like that. Keep in mind though, we have the Women's International, twenty twenty-five Women's International Day as well. Um, if we want it more as a lunch gala, if we want a brunch gala, if we want a dinner gala. So those are some of the things that we can keep in mind. Uh, other than that, does anyone have any comments, um, or any questions? Before I proceed to the commissioner's comments? No? Okay, we can revisit all of this. Pardon me?
I forgot what I was saying.
You want me, you want?
No, it's okay, we can move.
You sure? Okay, um, any commissioners' comments?
Yes, I have a question. Have we gotten informed in regards to when people are requesting donations?
Yes, we did talk about that within the minutes. We did discuss that at the last meeting. Regarding the donations, because I had ma- made a recommendation, maybe that the guidelines or the form would be updated or we come up with some new guidelines. But as a entire commission, everyone, um, we all stated that we would keep it the same because every, we all have the discretion on how we can approv- approve, you know, or, uh, what, what was it, Keisha? We had the discretion on how we would, how we can approve.
We pro- proceed in approving.
Yes.
Getting funds and I think we talked about changing the form, but then we decided ultimately not to change the form.
Okay, how, how do I access the form?
Or the guidelines, on the website.
Okay.
Right.
Michigan City, yeah.
Yeah, Michigan City, uh, Michigan City Commission for Women's Website, there is a form there.
And so that, that's where I would direct, directing you on to, there was that, this requesting donation just to the website, is that correct?
Yes, she would complete, you would complete that request on that website. Or print it off and then you can bring it to the next meeting. But I believe, I'm not gonna say but, in addition to that, I believe we did discuss to have the person or the individual that's requesting the donation to have a small presentation or be present when they're making the donation, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think so.
Right, and so we would know what the donation is for, if they can give like a little brief presentation of the request.
And is it on the form, how much time that we, um, need? Because I know that was something that we discussed before and there was no timeline.
I believe we did discuss it last week and I think they said something about thirty days.
Forty-five days.
Yeah, I think it, because it's on there. I think that we discussed it. It was thirty days.
It was thirty days.
Yes.
Is, is that, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the form. I just wanted to know if that was on the form as well. When someone, I direct someone to, um, the website, is all that information, um, on the form.
I can double check. I don't have the full.
Yeah, I, and I can check also.
Do I have that form with me? I'm not certain if I have that form with me. One, one moment. I don't think I have that form with me, but I, I know, I believe that we did discuss that last week. That it was a time, so I'm glad that you brought that up, that it was a timeline for the request to be made. But the main thing, we requested the individual to be present when making, I mean, they can, they still need to complete the form. But they, you know, we're asking them to be present and make a small presentation. Any other questions? Okay, um, Daisy Lee had, um, stated that she wasn't gonna be able to, um, attend. Um, there's no one public to make any comments, um, but I'd like to end or conclude the meeting with, if, is any community announcements or whatnot that you all are aware of, for an example. Well, Keisha, can you?
Yes, Minority Health Partners, um, I'm the director and we're having a breast cancer walk on October fifth. And it starts at ten AM and we will be starting from twenty-seven, twenty-two Wabash Street here in Michigan City, which is Pentecostal Temple, Church of God in Christ. And if you come out, you can also get a free COVID booster shot and the walk is free. Just come out and participate. And if you have something pink, wear that, T-shirt, hat, whatever that is. So in addition, in addition to that, on October twenty-sixth, we're also having a gala and it's at the Oireg Temple here in Michigan City, the twenty-sixth, it starts at six PM. See me for tickets, call me if you need to, two one nine eight seven nine one seven one two.
Can you repeat that?
Two one nine eight seven nine one seven one two. Or stop by our office at twenty-six oh one East Michigan Boulevard and you can get tickets that way.
How much are the ticket?
The tickets are individually, they are seventy-five dollars. And if you buy a table, they're a little bit cheaper, but a table is eight people, so that would be five hundred sixty dollars for a table. So, but it'll be a nice evening of dining, good food, we're gonna have a DJ, we're gonna have a silent auction and we're gonna have a little bit more in the way of entertainment. So please come out and join us for a great cause to support women and just to show our love and support. And also our funds also go to help some women that are not able to pay for mammograms and things like that. And we help those particular women with some of those proceeds. Thank you.
Anyone else want to share? Any community events?
This, um, walk, that's, that's at Reverend Johnson's Church on Wabash Street.
That's where we start and finish.
Okay.
Um, I believe Saturday, um, what date is that? The twenty-eighth? The Saturday, the twenty-eighth?
About this month?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, NAACP Trailblazers banquet. And I believe that's gonna be at five thirty at PNW.
Yes.
Also, on the twenty-eighth, um, her name is Wendy. Pardon me?
Willis.
Wendy Willis and she's, um, like the director or whatnot with the Eastport Association, Block Association. And I believe she's having something as well Saturday, but it's in the daytime. And also someone on, um, the, um, the new Walker Street Garden. I think that, I don't know if they're gonna join together, but that's supposed to be on Saturday as well. Uh.
Black party, right?
I think so. It's something with the garden, um.
Were they giving out free, um, free vegetables or?
I'm not sure. I'm not certain, but I, it's Saturday, September twenty-eighth and I believe that's in the daytime. I believe her name, her last name is Edward. I can't think of her first name. But she does, um, she's amazing too, um, what she's doing with, um, the Walker Street, that Walker Street area, the garden. Um, I know that's taking place on the twenty-eighth. What time? I'm not certain. So maybe if you all can maybe, um, look on Facebook or something like that or call. If you have Ms. Wendy's contact information, she can probably share with you. And then also on the twenty-ninth, which is Sunday, at the Hope Center, Ms. Jerry Jones, um, they will be having a community event there, food, entertainment, um, and, um, the Lubizniak Center. It's gonna be, it's like a joint effort with them as well and that would be on the twenty-ninth.
Yes, also the, um, new Saint Rose chapter, the OS, uh, Eastern Stars will be having a yard sale on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, also from ten to two at four twelve Market King Drive.
Okay, and then, um, speaking of that, um, Pat Harris, Ms. Pat Harris, she is the president of the Michigan City African American Leaders Coalition. Um, they're developing a community calendar. And she's inviting, um, everyone of the community to, uh, the meetings, which is at the, the Port Convention, is it Tourist Bureau or something? Yes, at the Market Mall. What is that called? The Visitors, um?
I think it's a visitor and tourism.
Convention Center, something like that. Okay, well, it's, it's like, um, located at Market Mall.
It's right next to, uh.
The GNC?
Yeah, GNC, um, Planet Fitness, the NAC, so it's right out there.
So the next meeting, she's encouraging others to come out or the community to come out to see what the coalition is about, um, what the different, um, agencies or organizations are planning and, you know, different things of that nature, even in the community. Um, the next meeting would be Monday, October the fourteenth at five PM. And that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. Also, this evening at seven PM, um, the League of Women Voters are hosting a forum for all of the women candidates for the next election. And that begins at seven PM at City Hall. And did you want to elaborate Kiana on the one for next week or?
Um, I'm not sure when it is, I've been, I'm thinking it's, um, in La- LaPorte, um, at the, uh, I'm assuming it's at, at City Hall in LaPorte.
Okay, and that's for?
For the, another candidate forum that the League of, League of Women Voters are hosting.
Okay.
Do we ever get a replacement? Have you ever heard of a spring replacement?
No, um, so I have, I don't have an, um, update from the League of Women Voters regarding an appointee, um, that they're, um, you know, replacing Lori Wink with. Okay, any other questions before we conclude the meeting? This meeting, I thank you all for attending. I thank, um, Michigan City, the public for, uh, participating on, well, through the Zoom or audio or whatnot. And thank you, Kevin, for recording for us this evening. I know it's busy for you because you all have to be at City Hall probably within the next thirty minutes. So thank you again and you all have a great evening. We're just, oh, it's okay. Um, does someone want to motion for us to conclude the meeting? Someone motion to conclude the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.